Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Ted?
Here.
Mrs. Rail?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here. Next, we have a special recognition of a retiree who is unable to attend tonight due to a family circumstance, so we will move on to the minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July 8th and the Special Board of Education meeting open and closed minutes of July 23rd.
Motion second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of July 8th and the Special Board of Education meeting open and closed session meeting minutes of July 23rd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay, next we will move on to comments from citizens and delegations. Carrie Coran. Next, from Fort Lipton.
Coran.
Coran, I'm sorry.
I'm a Vesper Community Academy parent who's concerned about the possibility of discontinuing the charter school status at Vesper. I have four kids. We've been with the district for seven years. Last year, we had boundary exception, so we attended Vesper Community Academy for the first year. The other Rapids public school that we had previously attended was not meeting the needs of my individual children to my expectations. My fourth grade son is an able learner, which they have, it's basically gifted, which by the time he was in second and third grade, he's complaining he hated school and that he was bored and often complained he didn't want to go to school. But last year was a very different story, and I share this because he had such a positive experience at Vesper. And his grades went from average to high, just a high end in performance. The project-based learning and the innovation days were his favorite part of the year. My twins were first graders last year, also had unmet needs at the previous Rapids Public School. At the beginning of the year, they tested at the low end of first grade reading level and qualified for reading recovery, which shocked me at first because I thought, well, they were doing fine because no one had said anything to me previously. But Mrs. Thomas assured me that it was all well and that they will do well in reading recovery. They both made wonderful progress and met the end of the year first grade reading goals. I attribute this to the teachers seeing individual student needs and then setting goals to meet those needs. And one of the twins also received speech therapy, or he needed that, and I had asked three other, in three other school settings, about having those needs addressed with no response. Vesper saw the need and set an evaluation, set it up, because the therapy will probably take a couple of years to correct this speech issue, but at least Vesper has started him on the right way. They started him as soon as they could, and he made positive progress last year. My sixth grade son also excelled out at Vesper, the project-based learning, met his needs very well, and his grades improved considerably. And my statement to you is that I would hope that you can still consider keeping the charter status, because there's so many benefits of this program for all students, who's a very successful school and meets the needs. And I just wanted to state my personal success stories of my four kids, and it was the best year of the seven that I've been with Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Carrie Banner.
I am a parent who chooses to do a boundary exception to Vesper School. Knowing that Vesper was one of the first schools in the district to become a charter school, and Rudolph and me were going to follow their model, I'm looking for some explanation as to why you would not renew the charter contract for the model school when it has been so successful and the model school for the two others, the charter school status for the two other schools is still intact. The decision was made a few years ago to make Vesper a charter school, and I've spoken to both teachers and parents, and all of them are very pleased with the results of the Vesper charter. I've even spoken to some board members, and at last week's meeting, it was stated that the project learning is viewed as being successful and is supported by the district, and that they want other teachers to share and continue in that project learning. So if it's so successful, why would it not continue to be funded? You know, what has changed? And again, if you're wanting them to be the model, to model the project learning, but you're going to cut the funding for the school to be a charter is unclear. The basis for a strong future for children requires a solid elementary education. It requires involvement and support from parents and from the community. VCA is a great charter program. It has outstanding teachers and staff. It has strong community support. It has a governance council that is made up of staff and community who are all focused on providing the best for the kids. So why would you take that away from the children? And if a successful program is being, or charter school funding is being cut, what other successful programs in the districts are going to be cut or are being considered to be cut? Part of the process of making an informed decision is to make a list of pros and cons. Can you provide us with a list of pros and cons so that we can see how this decision is being made and perhaps, you know, help to make the right decision as well as understand the decision that's being made? We've been doing exception out in Vesper for five years now, and last year, there were enough kids to do two classes, a 4K. When my child first started there, there was only 10 kids in the program. Now, my youngest child, who was in the kindergarten class, had 22. So in three, four years, it grew by that much. So why was the decision made last year to move the two classes for the 4K to a different school in the district? What was the reason behind that decision? When community members want to send their children to a specific 4K school and it's having success, why does the district not support that? And I'm looking for an answer other than funding. And then finally, please reconsider the decision. If I'm getting mixed information, I've talked to one school board member that said it's being voted on tonight. I've talked to another school board member that said that, no, it's already been voted on, so I'm confused. But please reconsider that decision. Give us another 30 days, you know, to reevaluate it, consider the pros and cons, do the research to understand the facts and to make an informed decision, and consider feedback from the community members outside of the school board before making a final decision. Thank you.
Mr. Krueg.
Let me use the microphone, sorry. Scott Krueg, State Representative of Southern Second District. This item came to my attention late Thursday afternoon. And here we are, early this week, coming to a decision. I'm asking kind of the same thing some of the other parents have probably talked to you about, is to take some more time with this issue. I've been talking with DPI over the course of Friday afternoon and this afternoon, not getting enough answers from DPI as to what some of the funding issues are. I really would appreciate some time for my constituents who do the border exceptions to have the opportunity to voice more an opinion on this, have more time for consideration. One of the things that I found concerning is DPI says there was not an application filed for continuing the grant, so maybe the decision's been made already not to file. DPI's going to look at it more, but like I said, I don't want to make any rash decisions, so I'd like to take some time and ask again if you can take another month to look at this issue and if there's some things we need to work on. State level and all, that's fine. I remember when we talked a couple of months ago about the governor's proposed budget for charter school oversight issues, there was some concern about at that time, about whether you would continue with charter schools in the district if you had no oversight. Went back to Madison and spent some considerable time talking to the governor's office about removing a lot of those charter school provisions that were found unacceptable by school boards across my district. Happy those provisions taken back out. I think it would give more consideration, more time for this issue. So I just ask for that, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll move on to our committee reports. We'll start with Business Services Committee.
Thanks, Scott. Business Service started at 6:00 PM. There was no public comment, and in our meeting, it was pretty busy. We had 7% of agenda items. Are there any items that they'd like held out? I hear none. The first item is BS1, which was the general office supply bid. It was really straightforward. It's an end-of-year bid for the papers, pencils, pens, markers, and that type of thing. Bid out, multiple vendors, and we awarded multiple vendors to the ones that gave us the best price. BS2 was the contract for our heating, our HVAC systems, Complete Control, which is a local company. Again, we awarded the contract, and I'd like to probably thank them for holding the same rates as last year. School district always appreciates not having increased in costs, and we managed to maintain the same price, but we had a problem with some iron twisting from our building grounds. But we did get the same price of $15,750 to cover 192 hours of service cost. The other advantage of that is is that they're local, so that if something does come up, we're not long travel time. The third BS3 item was the 6603 agreements for bringing students from Fort Iverson students coming into our district. BS4, with the improvements of our technology and the increase of our bandwidth, our firewalls have become physically extinct and probably cut a few holes on them, so we are upgrading our firewalls to basically have two firewalls. One will be housed here at East Junior High, and the other one will be housed at Lincoln, so that we have protection if something happened one side or the other, assistance would just be of function. BS4, excuse me, BS5 was a computer purchase for River Cities High School. River Cities has been getting, they have computers that are about 870 years old, the oldest in the district, and they were getting to a point where they were functional to the software and the follow-up moves towards online technology, GEDs and everything else, we had upgraded the computers there. So there was a purchase of 40 HP6300 desktops, and it cost $24,000 to be funded through the district technology and special education budgets. BS6 is a district mail and food service delivery contract, and again, I'd like to thank box delivery, they are maintaining the same price that they had the previous two years. So again, the board thanks them for that, but I always appreciate it to have savings like that so we don't spend it away from education. The contract is for mail and food service delivery. It's $85 a day for the mail delivery, and $79 per day respectively for the mail delivery. We deliver mail with buildings, and then the mails before were elementary sites. And then BS7 was an interesting concept, probably we had a certain parking lot at Lincoln. The discussion was to reverse the flow, so the exit will not become the entrance, and the entrance would become the exit. And has that been done yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. It has been in the process before we brought the first vote, am I incorrect?
I think the issue for the charter school.
Charter school. Okay. So the issue for the charter school, please be aware that that will be changing, and hopefully we get some public notices out, through the radio and between the news stations. With that, I make a motion to approve BS1 to BS7.
Motion second to approve Business Services Items 1 through 7. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
And then the follow-ups, we had purchases update of an ESOP, with the ESOP tracking of employees. And then my favorite purchases was the district copy of purchases, which was awarded for still under $23 a box. Very good.
In favor.
And with that, I approve to approve the balance of the meeting minutes for Business Services.
Motion second to approve the meeting minutes from the Business Services Committee meeting of August 5th. All those in favor, please say aye. Vote. Thank you, John. To Personnel Services, Sandy.
Personnel Services met Monday, August 5th. Meeting was on board at 6:00 PM. There was no public comment. From that meeting, we have 7 consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number 1, the committee recommends and I move to approve the 1 support staff retirement request effective at the end of 2012-13 school year. Second, the committee recommends and I move to approve the 1 professional staff resignation request effective July 30, 2013. Third, the committee recommends and I move to approve the 1 non-union, non-certified support staff resignation request effective July 29, 2013. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the 1 support staff resignation request effective July 23, 2013. Fifth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the 3 professional staff appointments. Sixth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the 2 support staff posting results. And the seventh, the last one, the committee recommends and I move to approve Policy 342.5 Title I programs, and this is for second meeting. We had some discussion during the first meeting, there were no other changes. Is there anything that somebody wants held out? I'll second that.
Motion second to approve the BS1, BS7 consent agenda items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We had an update on, they're still working on filling some vacancies in the district, but we expect to have all those filled by the time students enter the buildings. We have 2 vacancy in our HR department, and we're looking at, or the administration's looking at having that similar to administrators where they're coming in at less than 100% for a period of a couple of years. That's still to be determined. If you remember, administrators are 95, 97 a month, it takes three years to 100%. And they're looking at compensation for disbursement manager. That's been something that's kind of slipped through the cracks for quite a few years, so they're looking at bringing that up to speed. And with that, I move that the minutes from the August 5th, 2013 Personnel Services Committee meeting be approved as printed. Second.
Motion second to approve the meeting minutes from August 5th Personnel Services Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
And then I move to approve the special closed session minutes of July 10, 2013.
Motion second to approve the meeting minutes from the August 5th, 2013 Special Closed Session Meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
July 10.
No, I'm sorry.
It was July 10.
July 10, I apologize. Thank you. And if we could go back to Business Services, I made an error, we need to have roll call votes. I apologize for that.
Do you want to do the motion again?
The motion was to approve BS1 through 7.
For Business Services.
For Business Services.
Correct. Okay. Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rail?
Yes.
Thank you. I apologize for my error. Okay, thanks, Sandy. Next, we have Ed Services Committee. Jan.
Thanks, Jen. The Ed Services Committee was called to order at 6:22, and we asked that any public comment about the charter school contracts could be heard during the discussion of that topic, and there was no other public comment. So we continue going to actionable items, and the first one was Policy 365.1 Rule, Network and Internet Acceptable Use and Internet Safety Policy Revisions for First Read. Philip Bickelhoff was here, Director of Technology, to explain the district's current Policy 365.1 Rule. Network and Internet Acceptable Use and Internet Safety allows students to use personal electronic devices at school. To ensure the policy is aligned with this change, the suggested language and definitions be revised. Mr. Bickelhoff also explained that removing Policy 365.1 Exhibit 1, which is the WRPS Acceptable Use Policy, also known as AUP Consent Form, will allow more flexibility to change the form as needed. Our second consent agenda item was about professional educator compensation for credits and district education units, which is also known as DEUs. Kathy Stevens-Hintz, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, told us that since the professional educator compensation for credits and DEUs was approved in 2012, the district expanded the professional development opportunities for instructional staff. Kathy shared the proposed changes to the professional educator compensation procedures. These procedures will be subject to an annual review at the discretion of the Board of Education. We went on to our charter school contracts for Meade Elementary School and Vesper Community Academy. Both Meade Elementary Charter School and Vesper Community Academy's charters expired in May 2013. Colleen Diggman, our Superintendent, applauded both schools for their creativity while under their charters. However, the administration has concerns about potential legislative changes regarding charter schools and the impact this could have on the district. Superintendent Diggman explained that Meade Elementary Charter School will receive a dissemination grant in the amount of $125,000 for the 2013-14 school year. In order to use these funds, the school must remain a charter school for one more year. At this time, Vesper Community Academy no longer qualifies for charter grant monies. If committee members choose not to renew the charter contract, instruction will remain the same at that school. Various members of the public shared concerns and questions regarding the non-renewal of the Vesper Community Academy charter contract. Dr. Diggman explained that River Cities High School and Central Cities Health Institute also began charter schools. These charter schools no longer have a charter contract, however, instruction has continued as before. We went on then to math expressions, the math expressions purchase. And Kathy Stevens-Hintz explained that the district has been purchasing math expressions, softcover student activity books for students in kindergarten through 5th grade. To lessen its annual cost, it has suggested students in 5th grade receive hardcover textbooks. The textbooks would be a one-time purchase. Kathy shared that along with the purchase of textbooks for the 5th grade level, a request for teacher materials for special education teachers, and the annual softcover student activity books for grades K through 4 are included. And the price of that would be student activity books, grades K through 4, would be $56,006.40 coming from Curriculum Fund 10. Teacher materials for students with disability teachers would be $12,778.88 coming from Special Ed Fund 27. And the hardcover books for grade 5 would come to $30,660.30, and that money would come from the referendum. So we have 4 consent agenda items.
We have 5.
There's 2 fourths. Well, there's, okay, there's 2 fourths, right. There's 5 altogether. And the committee recommends and I move that we approve those consent agenda items. Is there anything?
Yes, we separate the Vesper issue.
Okay. Okay, we'll hold out the Vesper issue then. And then we recommend moving on the other.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's motion on a second to approve consent agenda items BS1, 2, 3, and 5. We just have a little call on that ring.
Mrs. Rail?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ted?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll go back to consent agenda items BS4. It's an area of Vesper Community Academy charter school contract. Please have a call on that ring. Oh, okay, discussion? Okay.
You want me to start?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Larry.
When I first heard of the concerns of Vesper Community, it was rather refreshing to have people saying such good things about a charter school that took a different idea, kind of learning that brings everything together in a meaningful way. You learn about it sort of in a natural way. I think that's been a successful technique in a lot of schools that I've noticed and that through, and it's worked at Vesper. Students like it, staff likes it. We've done significant training with the people out there, and then WASSA takes the people that we train, but we, you know, we train them and send them on to WASSA. But at least we get the good things out of that thing, out of that idea, and we share it with other schools in the district. When I talked to Superintendent Diggman about the decision, I said, well, does it cost us anything? No, it doesn't cost us anything. Well, I said, well, we just renew it. She said, well, there are some changes in how things are happening in the state, and this would tie us into a particular way of doing things if we may not want to do things. I said, well, can they continue doing what they're doing out there? She said, fine, we have other schools in the district that have come in as a charter, taken a couple of years or 3 years, and then gone off the charter thing, but continue to do what they liked from the charter experience. So I thought, why renew it if it's not needed? So that was where I ended up in the discussion. And I would tell the Vesper people, we have no intention of changing what you like out there, and we hope that you continue to keep going with that, and we're not going to get in the way. I'm not going to get in the way. Go ahead.
And I would agree with Larry. I've been out at Vesper a couple of times. I've been to a couple of the meetings, and I've been very sure the work that's been done. In fact, we had a group that came here and showed us what they're doing, and I'm amazed at what they can do. I wish they could come to my house and use my computer the way they do. But as Larry said, with the state and with the budgeting, we don't, we don't know how things are going to shake out. We, I intend to have Vesper being run the same way. Your children will still be being taught the same way. I'm hoping that other, other elementary schools will gain knowledge from what, what Vesper is doing, and I, I don't think you have to be concerned.
Well, I would echo those statements, and I would also say that none of our schools exist on an island. What we do in all of our buildings is shared amongst our buildings, so hopefully the best practices from each of our buildings are instituted in all of them. I fully intend to see Vesper continue to operate the same as it's operated in the past.
I agree. I mean, in researching it, I got, and the confusing part is, is we got, I got various calls from, we're closing Vesper, to how can you take, take this away from my kids? So there's a lot of misconception on what was actually happening. Nobody here intends to close the school and/or wants to see the change. We voted to put it into that green base.
No, project.
Project, just the other green base. A project-based school, and we, we want to continue. Part of my decision to discuss the contract as far as whether we renew or not was the fact that if we don't renew it, we continue that education track, just like they did in CCI and in River Cities High School. And if Meade uses its funding, it probably will go the same way. If you get the grant to build your school, once you build your school, and you no longer available grant money, the district is still supporting us. Nobody's taking funding away from your kids, but we also have to look at the whole school district and what's best for the whole school district. And Mr. Krueg said that they removed the charter school part of the budget, but we're still hearing whispers that there's people from Madison that want to bring it back. So there's a lot of concerns about the cost to the school district if that happens the way Governor Rockery proposed it originally. Several other things out there that concern us as far as cost, one, school choice. That's going to be a costly endeavor for the school district and every taxpayer in our school district. So there are things out there, but we have to look at the big picture, at the whole picture, and by not renewing the contract doesn't mean we're closing the school or don't want it to continue on the track. It's just the fact that we have to protect the district and the whole district from future financial issues.
Good job. Sandy?
I voted to continue with a one-year contract for the Vesper school for various reasons.
First, you know, Mead hasn't, even though they did, were successful in getting their two-year dissemination grant, Vesper wasn't. I'm taking a leap of faith with what happens in Madison because the government may propose one thing which we can live with, but our legislature takes it upon themselves to expand, for example, voucher schools. So my leap of faith is, they have removed a lot of these things that were not invested through, so the school district concerning charter schools. They just, they didn't pass this time, and I'm hoping and pray that they don't institute these in this coming year if this charter were to be renewed for one more year. And even if they make changes, I would think they would not do it in the middle of a school year, that would be in the coming year, 14, 15. So for that reason, you know, I'm voting to go with one-year extension for Vesper. After one year, who knows? If there's any changes in Madison, you know, some of the things that they proposed are just not livable. And, you know, so that's my rationale for it. You know, I could not see going to five-year or anything, but a one-year I think I could live with, hoping that Madison is kind to the school districts.
Okay, there was a motion in a second to not renew the Vesper Community Academy charter school contract. Please have a call on that ring.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
To not renew the Vesper Community Academy charter.
Thank you.
Yes, this is my vote.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
No.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Our update was about the Wisconsin Student Information System. A question had been raised about what kind of information that they were going to be collecting with that. And so Kathy Stevens-Hintz was here to share with us that there is growing concern about the implementation of the statewide student information systems, also known as SSIS, and the type of information being collected about students and their families. Kathy explained that the confirmation, that confirmation from a Department of Public Instruction consultant has been received, that items such as blood type, voting status, and religious affiliation will not be included in Wisconsin's SSIS. However, family income would be included if families complete free and renewed applications. So with that, the committee recommends, and I move, that we accept the remainder of the minutes for the Educational Services Committee meeting of August 5, 2013.
Motion a second to approve the Regular Committee meeting minutes and Service Committee of August 5, 2013. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, okay, thank you, ma'am. Next, we're on to agenda.
John, one comment.
Go ahead, Larry.
When good things happen, it's nice to highlight them. And a good thing happened in the Skyward decision that the state and the DPI came down, and we had not only our representative, Mr. Krueg, we got bipartisan committee of legislators to put that together, along with a lot of hard work and the Stevens point in other areas. And I want to thank Mr. Glut for being part of that, that we need more of that, and school funding is your next issue.
You're a good sign of faith to get things going in the right directions.
Thank you.
Oh, proud, thank you, Larry. Okay, next, agenda referrals or information requests? Do you have anything?
I have one.
And Larry?
And I want to preface this, but we don't have, we don't, I don't want people to feel they have one more thing they have to do. I was watching a program called The Food That America's Children Eat, A Place at the Table, and it gave some rather concerning things about the nutrition that children get. Fifty percent don't know where their next meal is coming from, and some other rather serious things. And my curious is whether that's happening here in our district, and I don't know exactly how we would find out, but summer is when things happen, where they're going to happen in the homes. And then when they get to school, they get a school lunch with good nutrition, hopefully. And they do, because I've seen it. I'd like to know whether our kids are typical of those others in the country and are not getting enough to sustain themselves.
During the summer?
Yes. Or, you know, even in the winter, when they're getting school lunches and other nutritional things from school. I don't know what we do about it, but I think if kids can't get good nutrition to the point where it doesn't sustain them, how can they learn?
I think we saw an example a couple months back when we talked about the backpacks on the weekends, that there is need. There are children that take a backpack home for their weekend meals, so I'm sure it's in our community. I guess I'm not sure how we address it.
Well, I know in the summer, the Boys and Girls Club addresses that because they actually feed breakfast, lunch, and then they have snacks. My daughters work there, and they serve a lot of kids. And I know moving into Pittsburgh, they're going to be probably serving a lot more at Mead School.
Along with that.
At Mead School.
Along with that, that's the jewelry for those breakfast programs, that's part of the thing, you know, they just started the one at Grove. We've had one at Mead, very successful, and they've shown these, you know, they told us the research that a lot of times these kids are coming in to get breakfast because on the weekends they don't necessarily get them. So we know the needs there in the community, and it's there, it's prevalent. So you're right, and, you know.
I would agree. I don't know how we would maintain information you're looking for.
And I don't want to spend a lot of extra time on it. I'm just curious as to what goes on here, because this, we can see and we can fix, or we can try it. We just, everybody else, we can't do much about, tell them a free reduced cost.
Go ahead. Just some anecdotal information. We have a, we've had for the last few summers, a summer feeding program, and this year at Lincoln, their numbers are up considerably over prior year at Lincoln High School. So anyone can, and this will apply to anyone, regardless whether they're free or just, they can have a free breakfast at Lincoln High School. And that's good.
Anybody for one this word?
Thanks, Larry. Anything else? Okay, next, we'll move on to the legislative agenda.
And I don't have anything to talk.
Okay.
What?
Mr. Krueg, you're here, is there anything you'd like to share with us?
You know, as long as you guys have nothing, I'm just going to leave it alone.
You had your chance. Okay, next, we'll move on to the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that receipts be noted and the bills be paid as planned.
Okay, motion a second to pay the bills for another month. Should we please have a roll call vote, Larry?
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have new business. First agenda item for the first item really is the review and approval of updated District Crisis Action.
We sent you a copy of what's been put together. It's been hours in the making. Maureen has been very helpful, and wanted just knowledge here in helping the flow of the document. It was first adopted, there was a program where a crisis plan first adopted back in 1998, and this is basically an update of that document. We sent you a portion of it in the table of contents that would kind of be the page one, that's the listing of the things that we gave you, and a few things like phone numbers, emergency and non-emergency, there's a bit of an introduction to the plan, how to use it, and so on. And then you'll notice in that table of contents that there's something called the annex and something called the appendix. That we did not send to you. The annex, if you recall, it's basically our functional protocol. In other words, it's what our response will be in any given crisis situation. And we had you review that last spring. We called it a flip chart at the time. So that portion was already approved. In the appendix, it's also restricted information in the sense that we have different, a variety of different worksheets back there that include information on the school, what's acting like the evacuated, two, those kinds of things, that if we released it, it would be problematic for the security of our buildings and of our kids. So we did not release those items. What I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through a little bit. As I said, initially, we see the phone numbers, and we've got quite a handful of lists there. This is, this is a document that all our buildings will have. They will fill in the annex and appendix on their end and then submit it to me, so they'll have their own building plan, but then I will have the entire district plan, and we will also share that plan out with prior law enforcement and see the emergency management team. I recently sat with Wisconsin Rapids Law Enforcement specifically and Emergency Government, and we spent probably about four hours going through the entire document with feedback from them to really make it something that they are comfortable with. Again, on page five, there's a bit of an introduction. On page six, it starts talking about the release of the manual. Some of that is coming from the one that is approved in 1998. So some of the pieces haven't changed. Information and general guidelines for the crisis management. We tried to make it, to some degree, kind of a checklist format so that it's easy to use for administrators to be able to pull a document out, look at it, make sure, do I have all these pieces in place? As you go on, the crisis plan in service, it gives you an idea of what the different teams are, that we have a district crisis team, that we have one at each building level, and then what should happen every year at each building level as far as review of their building crisis plan. And then as a district crisis team, we'll review the plan as a whole as well. On page 11, it gives you a start of a plan overview. It talks about the potential types of hazards that we could encounter. It talks about preparedness, mitigation, prevention, all the pieces that are components that are part of state statute that have to be in a safe plan. And then goes on to organization and responsibilities, and essentially kind of goes through each person's role in more of a general sense. The specifics would show up in the annex or in the appendix, depending on where they That would take us all the way through to, we did a little, if you go to page 17, there's direction, control, and coordination, and that's how we work with law enforcement. You'll notice that there are some pieces that, like evacuation sites, for example, each building will have one listed for themselves. For example, if I have a smoking ballast and it's 40 degrees below zero, I have a place in mind that I can get my kids to if we need to evacuate the building. If there's a larger, more intense crisis, Emergency Government will tell us where to evacuate to. So that, we don't even know until they call and tell us where we're headed. But for our own internal, you know, we, each building has a location in mind. We talked a bit about recovery. We have talked long about recovery, which is an issue that when schools go through, school districts go through a crisis, it takes years. And I think oftentimes people think, well, the event's over, and it's been a year now, and so things are, you know, progressing, it's normal. But I know that from the other crises that we've heard about across the country, that years later, people are still suffering from that crisis. So recovery is an incredibly important part of it. We also spent a long time talking about reification and how we need to be able to keep track of who's been released, who did get released to, all those kinds of things, and what that setup might look like, and what people we need doing, what kinds of things. We spent some time talking about communications, internal and external.
My question would be, and I, from watching stuff on TV every once in a while, quite often, people can't talk to each other. In 9/11, the police and the fire didn't want to talk to each other, never had done it before, they couldn't do it. What happens? How do you communicate? And what is the system that you use that's reliable and?
I think we're very fortunate in the sense that, I mean, New York's a bigger city, certainly, and they have various, have multiple stations of both probably police and fire. Dave Kurtman, who's our fire chief, actually sat at the table as well, and I failed to mention him, but I could tell from the dynamic, the conversation, that both he and the police department are very familiar with each other, and they have an understanding of how each other operates.
But they communicate with the school people, or how is that going to work?
You mean during a crisis?
Yeah.
It depends on what type of crisis it is and who the first responder is, because if it's one type of crisis, the police will be in responding, and the fire department will be back a bit while the police take care of it. If it's an active burn, I would imagine the fire department will be there, and the police will be back. But they have an understanding of the role of the other, just from the conversation that we had during those hours of review.
Because you've got to talk to each other.
Absolutely.
You've got to talk.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're fortunate that we have a really good, I think we have a really good relationship with law enforcement in this school district, and that's not always the case, I don't believe.
High school, excellent city or conference?
It's the same. I think part of their land crosses over.
Part of the land, the line, and the other side of why it goes.
They will have a unified response. I mean, they'll, they'll all, yeah.
I think you're right, 9/11 changed a lot of communication protocols amongst all the
If you go to page 25, that might be the pursuit that, we created a list as complete as we could think of of the prevention and mitigation measures we have in place in the district. Everything from what we do educationally to staff development issues. There are a couple of things throughout the plan that we haven't implemented yet, but will be implemented for this coming year should you decide to approve the plan. For example, well, I know, for example, one of the things we have listed is that we'll have numbers in all the windows. We have some buildings with numbers in the windows, but we're working on getting those done, so it's taking some time to get the numbers labeled so that from the outside, law enforcement knows that's room 204, or that's room 16, or whatever it happens to be. So that's a concept that other schools use. We've talked to law enforcement about it, they thought that was a really good idea. In fact, they encourage that. We just don't have it completed yet. So there are pieces of the plan that will be completed, should you approve it, then we'll continue to move forward with it.
He was talking about marking it on the outside. On page 25, he's also talking about marking them on the interior.
Where are you?
Educational slash informational, or down.
Oh, I thought I should say exterior.
Exterior is also on page 26. Windows and doors clearly marked, exterior physical security measures.
Where are you under the exterior?
On page 26, it does say exterior.
I think they switched it, I think doors, doors are marked on interior, and doors are marked on exterior.
Well, the doors, the doors are marked on the exterior as well. Exits are.
All that is marked on exits?
Yes. The doorway is marked on the exterior of the building. Okay, Sandy, I'm not seeing where you are.
On page 26, on page 26.
Okay.
Exterior physical, second from the bottom.
Okay, it just says windows and doors clearly marked.
Right, and it says exterior physical security measures. But on page 25, it says windows marked on interior.
Gotcha.
Like both.
Well, that's, I'm wondering, is it that?
I've seen the exterior.
Yeah, I know. Well, I think what I mean by that is that we're not putting the numbers, like, the doors out here, the exits have a marked letter or a number on the outside of the building, it's attached to the outside of the building. The windows are marked from the interior, we won't put the number on the outside of the window, it'll be marked on inside. Okay? So from the exterior, you can see that the window is marked. I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but yeah, that's confusing, I can reword that somehow. It's marked on the interior, so you have an exterior view of it.
Okay.
That makes sense.
That makes you, but I agree with that.
I see what you're, I see what you're talking about.
Can I ask, what are tag-out procedures on staff development?
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's.
When any work is being done on our electrical panels, safe house, the breakers shut off and then locked out with an individual lock, so the only person that can unlock that and turn that power back on is the key holder.
And the tag has that person's...
Young and blue number or something. Yep.
There's also talks about, for example, we have go kits that were created. It's going to be a bay, but houses are a variety of components, a bow horn to the first aid kit, two fluorescent vests, all the kinds of things you might need in a reunification situation, clipboards, those kinds of things. We're talking about also doing... I don't know what they're called it, but it's like a tag system where you lock it, but you can easily break it. But if it's broken, you know somebody's, you know, it's been compromised. So there's some of that kind of thing as well in the top of the tag out. So the go kits haven't been put together yet. We have the goods and our first administrator reading this last week, and so they'll each receive two.
So what's in the cable? Is that enumerated somewhere or is that confidential?
It is enumerated somewhere. We've, I guess, restricted that. You know, again, it's communication devices, it's reports, pens, that type of thing. It's normally, you know, maybe... We have some procedures in there for reunification, things that staff would be filling out. There's going to be class lists, those kinds of things.
Okay.
We would house one in the office and then one somewhere else should the office be compromised.
And this list, that's going to have to be updated.
Well, it's a register of the kids in the building, but yes, absolutely, there'll be more than once here. On some buildings, well, we're recommending that, but some places it'll be more often.
Big job.
So that's what we've got for you. It totals about 121 pages. And we would ask for your approval on the plan. We would review it routinely. Again, if there were some major changes, maybe we could certainly bring it through to you again. If there were less major changes, we would just make those and then bring it forward at a meeting as an update, but if you decided at that time it was needing more approval, then we would ask for that.
I appreciate what thorough and complete it is and open and clear. We never have to see how it works.
We borrowed and stole from our own documents and from the DPI website and some other plans that we came across and then really utilized it. Law enforcement professionals and our fire and emergency government professionals, they were very helpful.
And one thing I noticed, and I just didn't think of it, but you know, the 4K offsite locations and then the... Four K schools also being part of this, I think is really important also with the busing.
Well, as far as contact and what the note we're doing. It did have a meeting with Four K schools, well, with the Catholic schools and Manuel Lutheran and St. Paul's Lutheran. We talked about with emergency government, if there should be some kind of a standard response for them so that when they come to a building, for example, the window's being labeled, they know when they come to a building, they don't have to figure, am I at assumption? Am I at Lincoln? Am I, you know, where am I? I know the windows are going to be labeled, but there was some standard response that they could expect when they arrive on the scene where the first responders are. The 4K piece Kelly and I are talking about, she's in charge of a 4K program at the time, and she and I will be meeting probably with the 4K, just the offsites, not those in our buildings, but the offsites, to talk with them a little bit about what their plans might be.
Okay, there's a motion in the second to approve the administration's recommendation of the district crisis action plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
If you have questions, please talk to me about it.
I just want to say I was really impressed with the discussion about the recovery. I'm really impressed with that.
Well, we have a, we have a, as it's been placed, our crisis and emergency plan, it's been in place for a number of years and it's been a very useful document. It's been utilized, unfortunately, multiple times and it's gone very well. So that's a big part of our recovery.
Okay, next we have discussion and possible action to approve changes to policy 443.8, weapons on school premises, policy 832, weapons on school premises, and adoption of a new recommended policy 522.9, possession or use of weapons, staff and employees off of first read.
So if you go into our policy book, we have 443.8 and it says that that's covered in 832. So I thought you might as well establish a 443.8, and that is the possession or use of weapons that references students. So if you go to our student section of policy, there is no policy there, just reference, you know, sends you off to 800s. The three policies that are here are fairly similar. The students would be the most restrictive, I would say. The big change is that we actually have one that addresses visitors and volunteers separately from staff and staff and employees separately from students. So three different policies. Probably the... One thing that you'll see is that we address concealed weapons, that those are not allowed. But under the staff and employee policy, to me, it made sense to allow case unloaded firearms locked in their vehicles, even if they are parked on school grounds. We have a lot of employees that either go hunting or come in from hunting, you know, if they're early morning riser and they don't return until they're at that time today or deer hunt, whatever, it's a likely shooting. They will, you know, throw it in their car and perhaps drive to school or leave school to go hunting. And I've talked to one individual who said, yeah, I dropped my rifle off at my friend's house and then I come to work because I know I'm going right after work. I think there's a sense of common sense and reasonableness in my mind anyway. And I mean, I know for some of you who, you know, maybe aren't in possession of any firearms, I grew up with them, so I'm not uncomfortable with it, but some of you may be less comfortable with that. So that's one item I think you need to consider about whether or not we allow that. It is not allowed for visitors and volunteers or for students. That would be kind of a big, to me, that would be a big change if, you know, some of those familiar or comfortable with firearms. No concealed weapons allowed. We do have law enforcement on school grounds and they do carry, if they're on duty at this point in time, so it made sense to me to wipe out 832 completely and put these in place instead, but I'm just presenting it to you as a possibility. So.
I agree with you. I mean, I know it was probably, if you stood apart in the lap, probably 20% of the kids have a loaded shotgun or a gun in their vehicle for similarities and they go hunting right up to school and then you have to go back to the van and then I think they're trung through.
Yeah, maybe I just don't want it in policy.
I know, it's not a policy, but I mean, so I know what happens in as long as long as well with teachers having a problem because of reasons stated by telling, but and it is, I don't, I don't think it's a safety concern. I see responsible people just wanting to do the thing and just want to think about it. It's a lot of them have it there. I'm sure a lot of them leave it, leave it there. On one lane, I didn't think of it, a lot of times there we're doing this for parks. I don't have a problem with the law, I just think it's great.
The trees were pretty redundant in many places itself, just like more reading there.
Makes me nervous.
It makes me nervous, it makes me nervous too, but these are, the hunters are the people that...
Lock the car fine, but they don't need a lot of custody.
I don't think you're going to see a huge number. I mean, I thought, I go to work, I leave work and head to the woods and I have an loaded firearm in my vehicle. It's locked up, it's not for use, it's for use when I'm in the woods. We had a similar policy at work years ago and it was troublesome because who's going to police it? I mean, I don't think we want people going out, pointing through people's vehicle, you do have a right to privacy. So where someone has, it's not readily available to them. More of a convenient thing to work somewhere when they're not working, so I, my opinion, it's okay.
Do you think it's stolen at all?
Well, I can answer that, I don't...
I know when there's one option, there's a lot of people there.
I don't know that we've had a tremendous amount of theft in our parking lots. And I don't think this means that suddenly every car is going to have a case.
All right, I'll be nervous.
With that, I'll be worried about other things.
So do I.
Good discussion.
I can hold you on, yeah, for a discussion. I have a motion to approve changes to policy 443.8, weapons on school premises, policy 832, weapons on school premises, and adoption of a new recommended policy 522.9, possession or use of weapons, staff and employees off of first read.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second to approve the administration's recommendation, changes to policy 443.8, weapons on school premises, policy 832, weapons on school premises, and the adoption of a new recommended policy 522.9, possession or use of weapons for staff and employees off of first read. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay, next we have discussion and possible action to approve memorandum of understanding with local law enforcement agencies regarding concealed carry of weapons by off-duty officers while on school premises.
That's not going to make you more nervous, though. Well, I started out by speaking with Wood County Sheriff Tom Riker, a gentleman from Porridge County who deals with this concealed issue. Wisconsin Rapids Police Chief Chris Hoyer and Grand Rapids Officer in Charge at the moment, until they have a chief there. I wanted to see what their leaning was of having their officers carry off-duty because I wasn't sure if they promote that or if they discourage that for their off-duty officers. One said, well, I don't discourage or encourage, but I expect that it happens. Those weren't the exact words, but basically supportive of having that happen. And the others, you know, they again expect it. I talked to one of them, and I don't remember which, told me that there is additional, if they're going to carry concealed, there's additional training, not just the usual on-duty training that they take, but if they're carrying concealed, that there's additional training they have to take. And he said it's beyond what you or I would take as a concealed weapon class if we were going to do that. He said it's beyond that. I wanted to find out where they sat before I brought this to you. They're very much in favor of it. I mean, they are promoting or suggesting we should do this, but they would be in favor of it if you were interested in going this road. It's a memorandum of understanding, basically, that allows any un, or off-duty officer to carry a concealed weapon. And referencing a peace officer is defined by state statute, which basically means somebody who keeps the peace, keeps order, law and order, and can arrest if there's a criminal issue.
That includes security, whatnot, that was.
No, it's an employee, it would be, those would be employed by either Porridge County, Sheriff's Department of Wood County. It's not auxiliary police, it's not that kind of a thing. It's somebody who's a police officer who can actually make criminal arrests. Because I looked up the definition of police officer, I thought, what exactly is that mean?
Pre danger.
Essentially, essentially, well, it's defined in statute. And it's, again, somebody who's there to maintain control in the public or maintain public order and also somebody who can then make arrests for criminal activity. So I thought, well, what if, what if they on a routine, you know, in a routine manner carry a concealed weapon off-duty? That's not unusual for law enforcement officers to do that. And then they happen to come to a football game and they forget, oops, because right now, we don't allow concealed carry on school grounds. This MOU would have to be between the school board, Wisconsin Rapids, and whoever that entity is, that law enforcement entity, to allow their off-duty officers to carry a concealed weapon. There's some pros and some cons in my mind. The pro would be, you know, we have a little extra law enforcement available to us if something would happen. I would hate to have an officer sitting next to me and something bad happened at a, you know, some event that they might be attending and not be able to do anything about it. And of course, I'm going to the worst-case scenario and which, you know, that would be... The con would be certainly the nervousness of, but they're trained, they're highly trained, it's concealed, nobody sees it, and it wouldn't be something that they would be just using because they can. It would give us a little added security at, I think, events and would also deter perhaps some behavior that might not be so long. Again, it would only be, you know, they would only respond in an extreme situation where it would be to respond. But I wanted to bring it to you. It's certainly your prerogative to determine whether that, or not that's something you want to embrace and try.
Kelly, if they're off-duty, I mean, are they 24/7 a police officer? Can they do whatever they, if they were at a football game and they saw a disturbance, they could just act?
That's my understanding. I mean, we generally have police officers there.
Right, I understand, I just want...
But if they're sitting in a stand, I mean, I'm not an expert on what law enforcement officers are allowed to do or not do, but I know in a situation if they were off-duty and there was a disturbance, they could step in. I don't know if they have an oath that they take, the commands that they step in, I mean, I don't know.
I would approve the memorandum of understanding of local law enforcement enforcement agencies regarding concealed carry of weapons by off-duty officers while on school premises, off-duty peace officers. All right, peace officers.
A motion in the second to approve the administration's recommendation of a memorandum of understanding with local law enforcement agencies allowing the possession of concealed weapons on school grounds by off-duty peace officers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Okay, we'll take the last item, is discussion and possible action to approve revise police liaison contribution agreement.
It's all about safety and law enforcement tonight. Couple of, the previous agreement was expired, so I have, we've redone it. We thought we would renew it because we do like having our police officer available to us at Lincoln. We also have one here at East, and I believe the police department covers the cost of that one. In this, for the Lincoln High School, a police liaison officer, we pay 60% of, we make their contribution to the annual cost of that officer. Couple of things that changed really from the previous agreement 2.02, that we recognize and agree that they are armed from time to time while on duty. And then the second portion, the second page, and that's really all there is to change there, and then that they're, that they may install and maintain at their own expensive weapons locker in the PSL office. It's locked at all times. I've talked to them extensively about this. The office itself is locked if that individual's not there and when the individual's not in the building, you know, unless he's wanting to take a lunch hour or if she's wanting to take a lunch hour, that weapon will be taken with them in a secret manner, shall I say. It will be unobtrusive. In other words, they're not going to carry out the weapon in the open. It would be in a gym bay or...
I could use...
Well, they have their, they have their sidearm, but no, we're talking of a secret rifle.
In case it would have to be, in case it would need more...
Yes.
So right now, their, their sidearm, the sidearm, they just, in their holster, they just carry it and just fill that...
carry it into school that way? But this is something in addition to that?
Yes, this would be an additional, I don't know what kind of a weapon exactly, but.
It says from time to time, I mean, what, we're timed at time, I mean, like, what are you talking about, like, when, why would they bring that? Well, in, I mean, say that.
Oh, that they'll be armed from time to time?
Yeah.
Oh, well, just generally they are, aren't, I think there may be where occasions where they, they aren't, with their sidearm, that, we're just talking, their pistols or other service weapon. That's, that's different than the locker.
So, they carry their sidearm in now, but I'm assuming they don't have it on them if they're walking the halls or something, is it somewhere in the office, is there a secure location now?
If they have their sidearm on right now, they.
Is it them at all times?
Yes. But this 304 would refer to, I imagine they could put their sidearm in there, but that refers to if they were to have an additional, I'm thinking, I don't know what kind of a rifle they might bring in, but that they would have an additional rifle.
Well, why would they bring it available? Why would they bring it in?
For additional firepower, should it be necessary?
Like, they're anticipating a problem, or?
No, just, it just.
Could be anything from a security asset must have gone, could be, just have it available, or it could be.
I think it's like randomly, like, randomly, because they're coming for a certain reason, I think. Do they have to have a reason for bringing this extra weapon right now? Or is it just going to be kind of random, I think, I'll bring an extra rifle to school today, and you know, like?
No, it would generally be there, unlocked at all times, and available should it be needed. But it would go home every day then, it would not stay there, so.
The world we live in today.
If they need something with higher capacity, or it might even be extra ammo, it might even be a couple extra magazines that they might have to have.
Well, the other, the other case is that there would be multiple keys, and should the officer be the one down, then somebody else has access to that.
We approve the revised five-year police school needs on the Grand Rapids school.
It's a tree, you said multiple keys.
Well, the.
Building principal is or doesn't need, that, I guess that would be a question too, other than.
Well, the building principal would have one, and the police liaison officer would have one, someone, not me.
And so, but, going back to the other plan of the crisis plan, if the principal's not there, then another person has a key, another person is there, like, who's in charge of the principal's away, and you have another person, so there'd have to be another person with a key or access to that.
Well, someone will know where it is. I don't think the principal will necessarily carry it on their keyway. We talked about the police department having a key downtown, and the officer having a key. If you're more comfortable with that, we could certainly change it to that.
I might add, word specifically, not multiple keys, I'd like it reserved.
No, it just says the building principal, or his or her designated, he will have an extra.
And that'll be the building principal. But then, it says multiple keys, or if I can just state it, police liaison, police department, building principal.
It doesn't say multiple.
Doesn't say multiple?
Multiple's anything more than one in my mind, so there would be two keys. It may be that the police department keeps one as well, but generally, when you get a lock, you get two keys, whether it's a lock, a file cabinet, or a gun safe, or whatever, there's often two.
I'm sure the thought behind it is to have it in the building, so if it's needed to access. Because the officers that would be coming in from offsite would be armed.
But if the officer is not there, nor hold the weapon, it'll only be there when the PSLO is there. But if the PSLO is the first one to go down, then someone else has access to it.
Is that person trade, I mean, that's someone else, how would be, somebody who knows how to use that, like, I mean, that's an issue.
Any other discussion or questions?
This isn't the topic, Chris.
I know. If he's comfortable with it, but unfortunately, it's part of the. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the administration's recommendation, approval of a revive.
Revive.
Revised five-year police school needs on agreement between the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department and Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Voted.
I will, I will just tell you that the locker piece itself is a request by the police department.
Okay, and I would ask everybody to note dates on the calendar of upcoming meetings, and with that, we're here, thank you very much.